Twenty-two, it's a Monday. We'll call this meeting to order, and if you would, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers.
Here.
Allenbos.
President.
Ingalls. King.
Here.
Mayor Falcons.
Here.
This time, if we could have a motion to approve the agenda as it's been presented.
I'd make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Councilmember Allenbos.
Yes.
Ingalls. King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries. This time, we'll open the floor for our first public comment. We do ask if you come forward, if you would please state your name, and then if you would write your address for the clerk, that would be greatly appreciated, and keep your comments to three minutes or less.
Hi, my name is Mitzi Cook. I live on Far Street in Cadillac, and I am here about the speeders from the traffic from the factories, all hours of day and night. They put a speed sign up there, they see that, they slow down till they get beyond it, they take off again. They're averaging about thirty-five to fifty-five miles an hour. We never have an officer in our area, very rarely. I've seen three state troopers pull people over, they're not even from the city, and I understand the city officers have other things, same complaints, same people, same houses, regularly, that they're busy, but we need to figure out something. Whether we get the trailers that take a picture of their plates, send them a ticket in the mail, I don't know, but I know this sign has not done a whole lot of good. We've had people almost get hit, we've got an autistic boy that rides his bike constantly, and a lot of times he wears headphones, listening to music, but he doesn't pay that close of attention. Now, at twenty, twenty-five, they could probably stop their vehicle, but at thirty-five to fifty, no. It's getting out of hand. I did call a guy in last week, gave the officers approximate time when this guy comes through every day, and he's about forty-five to fifty miles an hour. Well, by the time they got there, he was gone from the residence where he was at. So, then I have not seen him down there since, but this is daily, and it starts about four-thirty in the morning, goes till around seven-thirty, then it starts again around eleven, and goes till almost one, and then it starts before two, and goes till around four, and then you got the night people, and it's out of control. And I understand the officers, they have a lot to deal with nowadays, it's not Cadillac, it's not like when I grew up, where it was safe to be out in the middle of the street at nine o'clock at night, riding your skateboard, and I grew up in this house where I live. So, I would like for the city to figure out a way to help us out, in all areas, air street, new asphalt, people think it's the Indy 500 up there. I've worked road construction for the last seven years, I know, because I did do it once in a closed road, just to try it out. I'll be honest, you know, you gotta try it once, it was off my bucket list after that, but still, we need something to help our neighborhood out, the kids, the grandparents who walk their pets every morning, every night, you know, we have older couples that like to walk, but the streets are ridiculous over there. They don't obey the stop signs, the motorcycles, some of them are out of control, I mean, I don't know what else to do. I'll invite y'all to sit in my front porch, my front yard sometime, and pay attention to it, and see what I'm talking about.
Thank you very much.
What block?
I live on Fire and Fourth. But it's Fifth Street, Sixth Street, you name it, we've got it. And I have been speaking to Officer Eller back here about it.
Traffic from the factories.
Yeah, I mentioned that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, have a nice night.
My name's Kathy Klein, I also live at Fire and Fourth, and I'm complaining about the noise over there with the trucks, they blow out my eardrums when they go by, even when I have my windows closed, I can't hear the TV, it's so loud, and they're obnoxious. They go by and they rev up their engines, and they seem to know that it irritates me, although I don't say anything to them, but they rev up their engines all the time, and it's just ridiculous, it's so, it's out of control. I don't know why nobody has mufflers on their vehicles anymore. And also, what Mitzi was talking about with the speeders, there was a guy, he lives down at the other, at the far end of Far, and he was going, "I bet at least sixty," the other day, and it just, it's ridiculous, because there are children there, there are older people and pets, but with the speeders and the noise, and the semis that turn down there, and that's not a road for semis, they can easily go, turn the other way and go out, they don't have to come down Fire Street, they can go out to Mitchell Street, or down to Thirteenth Street. We just need something done about it, if possible. So, I remember when I was on the force, we used to write fix-it tickets for those things, and it needs fixing. Thank you, that's all I wanted to say.
Hello, Brian Walsh, I live on Fire Street as well. Fire Street was repaved a couple of years ago, and it turned into a quarter-mile drag strip, like Mitzi reiterated. I bet you some people reach speeds of sixty miles an hour on that street. So, there's three shift chains at the factory, so there's thirty minutes before, thirty minutes after. Mr. Allenbos, I know you used to jog down that street when I was a child, I used to watch you. It is out of control, someone's going to get hurt. I will agree with Mitzi, something has to be done. They have come out, a couple tickets, one person gets to the factory, hey, there's a cop sitting on Fire Street and Fourth Street, they'll just go the other way. To address traffic, there's a designated truck route, it's not being enforced, it's down Right Street and across Fifth Avenue, Fourth Avenue, they're not doing that. Even the city vehicles come down Fifth Street, turn south on Fire Street. I came in, left a note for Mr. Dietland about requesting a non-parking at the corner, would be the West Side, Fire Street, south of Fifth Street. Those vehicles make a wide turn, there's parked, a vehicle parked right in front of Clyde Fales' house, they go in the other lane. I watch it, cars slam on their brakes all the time, all day long. That section between Fourth and Fifth Street, at least the north half, should have no parking on that side of the street. Drive-by there, I count probably a hundred, hundred-and-fifty passes of city vehicles every day. We're not talking pickup trucks, we're talking large plow trucks, you know, I understand that's a direct route, but no parking, and they put that speed sign up there, and it became a challenge to them. It's almost like, let's see how high we can go. So, I will, I guess, third the motion on, it needs to be addressed, and soon. So, thank you for your time.
My name's Chuck Fales, I live on Fire Street also, and Fire and Fourth Street. I just wanted to add that I contacted the mayor, called me back one evening, after I sent it, I think I sent an email, I'm not sure, but Mr., is it Pecha?
Pecha.
Pecha, and also, I want to say the city safety person, all contacted me, and I talked to them, and that's when we got the sign put up, that was a year ago, March, so it's been up since then. At one point, I think I had a conversation with the safety person, I think it was him, saying that that would accrue some different information with that machine, but I was told in the last six months that, no, that doesn't do anything, it just puts the sign, how much the speed is, and that's all. So, anyway, I just wanted to let you know that the sign's been there, we have approached this before, over a year ago, and it, it's loud and fast. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close public comment, and move to the approval of the consent agenda. And this evening, we do have the minutes from the regular meeting that was held on June twentieth, along with the minutes from the closed session held on June twentieth. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Ingalls. King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Allenbos.
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries. When you're ready, Sandy, that takes us to Communications.
Yes, it's being recommended to approve the display of a banner from August eighth to fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two, and the closure of Lake Street between Harris and Cass from August twelfth to fourteen, two thousand twenty-two, at the times noted, for the Call to All Family Festival.
I would make a motion to approve the display of a banner from August eighth to fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two, and the closure of Lake Street between Harris Street and Cass Street from August twelfth through the fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two, at the times noted for the Call to All Family Festival.
Support.
Councilmember King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Allenbos.
Yes.
Ingalls. Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries.
Being recommended to approve the serving of alcoholic beverages at the market from ten AM to twelve AM on August twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two, for a wedding reception.
I'll make a motion to approve the serving of alcoholic beverages at the market from ten AM to twelve AM on August twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two, for a wedding reception and congratulations.
I would second that.
Councilmember Shippers.
Yes.
Allenbos.
Yes.
Ingalls. King.
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries.
Okay, City Managers' Report.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. The first item under the Managers' Report this evening is special recognition of Robert Levand. Robert is here with us, and Mayor, and Robert, if you wouldn't mind.
Sure.
Coming together, maybe?
Yeah, I want to be where people at home can hear this too, so.
Yeah, make sure you're by the mic.
Figure this out. That mic or this one?
Anyone you want.
Go by that. I'll just stand right here with you. Okay, so tonight, we have a special honor to present to Bob Levand, for many years of dedication to our community, a true leader and consensus builder, whose goals have always been to make Cadillac a better place for everyone. Your positive impact will be enjoyed for generations to come, and your community service is very much appreciated, and so we'd like to give you the key to the City of Cadillac. Oh, sorry, Marcus was taking a picture.
Are you ready? Just want to make sure Eric's not photobombing us, here we go. Perfect.
Congratulations. We'll miss you when you. Do you have anything you'd like to say? Please.
Well, given the opportunity, never turn it down, right? I mean, unexpected, but greatly appreciated. I really thought when I got invited to come down, it was probably because the mayor was going to announce the state of Michigan had awarded Cadillac a $10 million grant to renew Main Street.
That'd be nice.
Wish that could have been the case.
I guess that wasn't to be, but I greatly appreciate it, I mean, very humbled, proud to have been able to serve the community of Cadillac through the DDA and various groups that I've been with. Greatly going to miss, I mean, forty-six years is almost a lifetime, so greatly appreciate the time I've been here. One of the things from going back to the days in high school and college, I was involved in a number of groups, and there was a poem that I kind of carried with me, and lately I've been carrying it with me again, so, you know, we're kind of going through another transition, and if I can indulge you just for a second, it's a short one, it's called "Man's Vanity." Sometimes, when you're feeling important, sometime, when your ego's in bloom, sometime, when you take it for granted you're the best qualified in the room, sometime, when you feel that your going would leave an infallible hole, just follow the simple instructions and see how it humbles your soul. Take a bucket and fill it with water, put your hand in it, up to the wrist, pull it out, and hold what's remaining as a measure of how you'll be missed. You may splash all you wish when you enter, you can stir up the water galore, but stop, you'll find in a minute that it looks quite the same as before. The moral of this quaint example is to do the best that you can, be proud of yourself, but remember, there's no unvaluable man, or indispensable man, pardon me. That's, like I said, all the way from college days and stuff, and again, appreciate the opportunity to serve, thank you.
It's been a pleasure knowing you, and hopefully you'll come home to visit on a regular basis.
Absolutely.
Awesome.
Already planning next June.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. This time, we would like to do a formal introduction of a brand-new police officer that we have. I'd like to introduce our Director of Public Safety, Adam Machepka. Adam?
Hello, Mayor, and members of Council. Have some pretty exciting news today and for the next couple of days. I think we're going to be up to full staff here shortly. Deputy Chief, if you'd like to join me?
I'd like to introduce you to our newest officer, this is Hannah Geiger. She is twenty-two years old, was born in nineteen ninety-nine. She is the daughter of her amazing, loving, and hard-working parents, Gary and Michelle Geiger. She grew up in Lake City, Michigan, with her parents, Gary and Michelle, her twin sister, Haley Geiger, and her younger brother, Hunter Geiger. Hannah graduated from Lake City High School in twenty eighteen, and then attended Baker College of Cadillac in twenty nineteen, continued by Ferris State University for the following three years, to be closer to her sister. In her free time, Hannah enjoys working out, being outdoors, and spending time with her family and loved ones. She graduated from Ferris State University's Law Enforcement Academy in May of twenty-two, with her bachelor's degree in criminal justice. Hannah started working for Cadillac Police Department on July sixth of twenty-two. She is excited to work for the City of Cadillac and to protect and serve the community. I will tell you that Hannah's first few days have been a challenge, and she continues to report to work, so we would like to welcome her to the city. Congratulations.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, we're going to go ahead and formally swear, I apologize. I had you, Adam. Thank you.
I solemnly swear that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States, that I will enforce the laws of the state of Michigan, and the ordinances of the City of Cadillac, that I will abide by the Law Enforcement Code of Ethics, Cadillac Police Department Code of Conduct, and all Cadillac Police Department and City of Cadillac policies and directives, and that I will discharge the duties of police officers to the best of my ability.
I'm excited, dear. I do.
Thank you.
Nice.
Well, congratulations, everybody.
Mom and Dad, too.
Yes.
I'm sure. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of City Council. The final item this evening under the Managers' Report is our emergency purchase report out. As your packets include, and as I provided previously, two emergency purchases. One is regarding, for the fire department's self-contained breathing apparatus, this is something that we've been waiting quite a while to get. For quick reminder sake and for the public's benefit, we were getting catastrophic failures with our prior equipment. Several manufacturers of replacement equipment was tested, and a subsequent order was put in due to all of the problems that you care about regarding supply chain issues and access to equipment. It took forever to get the new stuff. Fortunately, we do have it now in place. The units, the total cost to replace all of the units is expected to be one thousand, excuse me, one hundred forty-one thousand eight hundred eighty-one dollars, which is approximately eighty-five hundred dollars less than the original estimate, and a budget amendment to the fiscal year twenty-three budget will be required to cover these costs once we have a budget amendment document put together for Council's consideration. The second item this evening is regarding a rooftop heating unit at the Cadillac wastewater plant. Work was recently completed on that new unit, after various portions of it failed, and we had to heat the building with portable heaters. It was critical to get that up. We did have a few quotations that were able to come in, come into place, but due to timing issues, we didn't bid it. We had advanced mechanical, Mavic mechanical, and temperature control. The award went out to temperature control at sixteen thousand four fifty, which happened to also be the lowest quotation that we were able to get, and given the timing of all of this, we were able to absorb this within the fiscal year twenty-two budget without needing any further appropriations being required, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, in our packets tonight, we do have the minutes of the last Downtown Development Authority for you to review, that was from April twenty-seventh. And then, at this time, we'll open the floor for our last public comment this evening. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment and move to good of the order, or should anyone have anything?
I do have something tonight. I have been getting, since our special meeting on June ninth, I have been getting numerous calls from taxpayers who are extremely upset about not hearing a full story on what had happened in relation to the City Council considering buying a vehicle for unlimited personal use to the manager, and also providing a gas card. They've also been shocked that there was no follow-up with the newspaper on that special meeting as to what had transpired. I wanted to let the public know that it wasn't until Tuesday, June twenty-one of two thousand twenty-two, that a taxpayer provided me with the results of a FOIA that was sent into the city, asking for the specifics on that requested purchase. And I'm going to digress for a moment, because I think I've been very open with the manager, with staff, with council, that people can have differing opinions, you can ask different asks, but don't surprise me, and don't try to sneak something by me. When we came to the June sixth council meeting, at which time we did the manager's review, that was simply what I was told was happening. When we came back out to open session on June sixth, I was surprised with the request to purchase a forty-five thousand five hundred dollar vehicle and approve giving, which would be for unlimited personal use and business use to the manager, as well as approving an unlimited gas card. To me, that was outrageous to surprise council with that type of purchase on that short a notice, on the same night I learned, and I had to fight like the dickens to table that to get more information before we made a decision. Right after that meeting, an emergency special meeting was scheduled for June ninth, two thousand twenty-two, at nine AM, and for the life of me, I don't know what the emergency was, but again, by that time, I had done some homework and run some numbers in relation to what the effective raise would be, that the information, I don't believe, was correctly provided prior to that time, and to try to address the fact that we were making this large purchase that wasn't in the budget, we need a supermajority to vote, the liability questions involved with doing what we are being asked to do, and consequently, that did not go through. At that point, I was willing to be, oh, all right, look, I've always said, don't surprise me, don't try to sneak something on me. When I got the information on June twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two, I was angry. When I found out that two members of council were negotiating with the manager for a purchase of a vehicle as part of his contract, when they had not been authorized to do so, is a committee sent me over the edge, and I sent an email specifically to the mayor and to councilperson, T.I. Shippers. I want to thank the mayor for contacting me, because we had a very good discussion about it. She was able to give me her perception, I was able to give her mine. To date, I have not heard back from my email from, to T.I. Shippers, from me to her, stating my disappointment and wanting to know what the heck happened. In the package that was provided as the result of a FOIA request, there were emails dating back to May twentieth of two thousand twenty-two, indicating that the manager was talking about this vehicle, and talking about the benefits of the vehicle, with two members of council. The public needs to know, all of council has to be made aware of these types of situations. What's going on? It's not just two members, there's five of us to be involved. And to find out that there was an email on the twentieth outlining the possible purchase, and I'm disappointed that staff was moving forward regarding a possible purchase when the entire council did not know what was happening, should not happen, should never happen. And to find out then that there was the main twentieth exchanges, there was another exchange on June second between the two council members, and the manager, through email, discussing the possible purchase, discussing the possible benefits to be added to his contract, and then to have a meeting on the sixth, and never to have been informed before the sixth, of those exchanges or conversations is not, in my opinion, ever excusable when you're talking about spending the taxpayer dollars. I said to the manager before, negotiations for a contract are negotiations, you'll never offend me by making an ask for something, but when you are spending taxpayer dollars, it's got to be transparent, it's got to be open, and all of council has to know what's going on before it happens. Then to find out that not only was it given to two members, these conversations going on, and. on on May 20th, June 2nd, then to go to the 2nd and be surprised with this, then to have a surprise meeting on June 9th, and have the two council members still not update the other three council members on all the conversations that had gone on up to that point, and to ask us to approve this appropriation of taxpayer funds without informing us of all the background information or conversations. As long as I'm on council, that will be fought tooth and nail. We work as a team. We are five people. We are not two of five. We're not one of five. And we have to change how things are being done. It doesn't matter, I've had some people telling me, well, we did that in the past. I said, as we're working on changing the evaluation process, and Marcus is part of that, there are some great positive things that have come with the process changing. But I have always said, you can't have individual council members negotiating behind the scenes without the full council being aware. And if they're going to, they need to be in approved committee, and that did not happen and has not happened. Again, part of the discuss, the calls I got were that there was barely any notice for that emergency meeting. I will tell the public I fought to get the recorded June 9th meeting put on CCTV. There's a recording there. I'm disappointed, I checked it again now, I've called once. It says the 6/11 special meeting. It's 6/9. That needs to be corrected. But it took a council member to get that put on the site. And as long as I'm on council, I think every single meeting has to not only be recorded, but be promptly put on the site for the full public to know what's going on. And I wanted to make sure I addressed that tonight. I can't tell you how many calls I've gotten, over 15, saying, why didn't this special meeting get covered by the news? My understanding is, I'm not sure the news had notice prior to the meeting going out or didn't get it until after, and I would love to know the answer to that question. But there was no emergency, there was no reason at 10:00 in the morning on a weekday that we had to do a meeting when members of the public couldn't be involved. Saying that, I stand ready to continue to work, because there's so many positive things that happen in this city. But it is governed by five council members, whose job is to manage the manager so that the manager then can manage the city. And that has to be done in an open and transparent manner. And when it comes to spending the city money, I will not be surprised at meeting and asked to make an appropriation without background information. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I'm going in a different direction, if you have anything to say about it.
No, I don't. Go ahead.
Okay. Marcus, I think you said it all. I agree with you 100%. You knocked it out of the park. I got a question for Marcus. I received notification from a citizen of Cadillac. There's an employee of the city that works in the complex right over there that leaves every Tuesday from 11:00 to 1:00 and works elsewhere, another township, city, or village. Do you know that this is going on and why it's allowed, Marcus? I am aware, and it is permitted. It's okay? Yes. Okay. He gets two hours off a day to go work for another city, or where is he working? He is a consultant. For? Opportunity for another municipality. Another municipality. And there is not, it's not uncommon for other staff in other departments to have side consultant-type jobs. During working hours. During working hours. He's not, when he's not here, he's not on working hours. Obviously. Right. Okay, I find it unacceptable. The taxpayers are paying for this man to do a job here and to be here for his shift. And I just, I don't... Councilmember, it's not shift work. Whatever. He's here, he's supposed to be here for his work. No, it's unacceptable. That's all. That's it for me. Thank you.
Well, I was going to talk about how great this weekend was with the art fair and all the people who came out. It was wonderful to be back in the park with all of that. I was also going to talk about the Cadillac Mayor's Youth Council, who did a movie Friday night after the goings-on at the pavilion. And I also wanted to apologize to folks who did not get the memo that there was a movie there. It was with all of the art fair things. So I would like to announce that on August 3rd, there will be another movie in the park, and that will happen at dusk on Wednesday, August 3rd. So we'll get that out on Facebook and other places, so that could be, you know, maybe we can get it on the sign or something, too. And aside from that, I'm not going to comment about anything else.
All right, thank you. Marcus, did you have anything?
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Okay. Nor do I, so we'll go ahead and enter in the meeting. Thank you.